Commissioner Carr sent us a memorandum requesting it be the excuse for tonight's meeting due to a family conflict. We will not be voting on this since it's a work session. We will vote on this matter as far as being excused at the May tenth regular session. I call to order the work session of the Board of Commissioners of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, seven P. M. May third, two thousand twenty-two. Roll call.
Mayor Vaticiotis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Here.
Commissioner Carr is absent. Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Koulias.
Here.
Okay, seeing manager, of course, with your permission, I'd like to call Ms. Vincent up to the podium to introduce the agenda.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, this will be a real short intro on my part. Angela Christ, Dr. Neely and Dr. Daly are here tonight to give you an orientation where we are, what we've done so far, and where we are, where we're going with the strategic plan. So with that, I think I'll just let Angela take it away here, and she's more equipped to deal with this than I am tonight.
Well, good evening, and congratulations to the newly elected members of the commission. It's nice to see you. We got to see some of you during the strategic planning process, but nice to see you up on the adais. So I'm just gonna dive in, and for those of you, and congratulations to the mayor, being elected mayor, congratulations. So I'm just gonna go ahead and dive in and just share with you, maybe. Is that me or you? Yeah, I got it. It wasn't working. Okay.
It takes a little.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so just really briefly, this is what we're gonna do tonight. I just would like to share with you the scope of work, some of the data that we collected as part of Phase One. So I really want you to think of Phase One as our data collection phase. You will hear from Dr. Neely and Dr. Daly regarding the resident survey, the employee survey, and the employee focus group. I will share with you the draft, again, draft, themes, and some of the community priorities that came out of the focus groups. We'll talk very briefly about, so what's next, and go from there. So as you can see, we have collected and done a lot of deliverables in Phase One. We conducted, and I'm gonna go through all of these in a little bit more depth in a second, but in July of two thousand twenty-one, we did a strategic planning alignment workshop with the mayor and commission. We have also met in August, August third, with the city manager and his leadership team to really talk about the project, to refine the work plan, and to look how really it was being incorporated into what they were doing. We held a citizen engagement session on August twenty-sixth. We conducted stakeholder interviews in September and October of two thousand twenty-one. We held the resident feedback survey that was conducted in October-ish November. We also conducted an employee survey in November of two thousand twenty-one. We held a focus group in early December for employees. And then in January and February, we held community focus groups on two different dates. And then I presented on March the third of this year, two thousand twenty-two, with the previous commission in terms of information and next steps. So that's Phase One of the deliverables of the project. Phase Two, and this is where all of you come in. So as you can see here, hopefully, I believe you've all received all of these dates for what's coming up, and we'll talk a little bit more about these. But as you can see, we're here tonight for this orientation. We do have a very long and interactive day planned for May twenty-first, and that's where we'll really dive into the priorities, the goals, and objectives. We will then follow that up with a leadership meeting with the city manager and his team. And then we'll come back together on June the seventh, followed again by another leadership meeting. And then the intent is sometime in July, we will have a draft report for internal review. And then I believe we've marked August thirtieth for the final report to be presented to the commission. So that's Phase Two. Okay, so I just wanna briefly walk you through a couple of the deliverables. And so, as I mentioned, we met with the commission on July seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one, and it was really great. It was really interesting, a lot of different personalities. We conducted an exercise, SPC, who obviously has been our wonderful partner throughout this, facilitated and really looked at the different styles and personalities within the commission, and how do we all move forward on the same page? And so some of the things that came to mind that we heard was successes that they were proud of, the diverse parks, the waterways, the balanced budget, senior services, the history and the heritage of Tarpon, and the services to the residents. When we began talking about future successes and what was important to maintain, the number one thing that we heard, again, was the heritage and culture. It was the number one thing that rose to the top. Some of the other things that we heard at that time was long-term planning for climate change, as well as improved traffic mobility. Very interestingly enough, when we did the True North exercise, for those of you that don't know, it's an exercise where people would place themselves in different areas. So you would say I'm north, south, east, or west. If you identify in the north, you're one of those people who wants to make it happen, right? You just wanna make it happen no matter what. If you're in the west, you are very detailed. You wanna know everything. You pay attention to all, how do you cross the Ts? How do you dot the Is? If you're in the east, you really like to look at the big picture, right? So you're not as much worried about the details as, what's the big picture? How are we at that hundred-thousand-foot level? And then for the southerners, it's really about caring. And so at that time, all of the commission, everyone fell into caring. But you did have some different personalities within the commission. And so it was wonderful to be able to do that, because from there we were able to identify some guiding principles. And we think of guiding principles as those non-negotiable behaviors. So those are the way that you, as a commission, would want to act, how you would want the community to act. And so there were six kind of key areas that rose to the top, and they were citizens first, strategic decision-making, fiscal responsibility, communication, visionary leadership, and preservation. And those were the six kind of key themes, if you will, for principles that rose to the top at that time. Following this, we conducted, as I mentioned, a citizen engagement session, and that was held on August twenty-sixth. And again, some of the things that rose to the top for the citizens, current successes were the security and welfare of the people, again, the natural resources, the parks and waterways, history, heritage, and preservation. We heard that over and over again. Again, future successes. One of the interesting things that came out of this session was that we heard the citizens say that they were interested in a connection between the preservation of heritage and culture and public arts, as well as preparing for climate change. So they saw the value of needing to plan for climate change. They saw the value of the arts, but they were really, really committed to making sure that that history and heritage and culture was not lost along the way. We also looked at the guiding principles with the citizens, again, just trying to get some data. And so you can see here, again, citizens felt that within this project, that the citizens first was the number one thing at the top, that they needed to be included throughout the process and going forward. Financial responsibility and quality of life came in at second, and then again, communication. We also conducted stakeholder interviews, and so if any of you have ever seen this, this is a word cloud. And so, again, it wasn't a significant amount. I think we ended up, we had twenty-five names. I think we ended up doing twenty-three. I did reach back out to one other individual a couple of weeks ago who did not get interviewed and wanted to. But this here is basically all of the words that were used. And so if you see a word that is darker or bigger, we heard that over and over more times. So one of the things that we did in the stakeholder interviews was do a SWOT analysis. In addition to that, I also asked the stakeholders, if you could describe the city to me, can you give me three words? And I only wanted three words. And so we heard a lot. We heard infrastructure, heritage, growth, and sustainability. Those were really a lot of the words that rose to the top when they described the city, the city to them. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Neely. So Dr. Neely is an associate professor in the School of Public Affairs. I like to, he is gonna introduce himself because he has a very long list of accomplishments, but I like to say he is my survey guru. So he is gonna talk about the resident survey a little bit and give you some data, and be happy to answer any questions. But before I do that, any questions on what I've shared with you so far? All right, great. Dr. Neely.
Thank you. I have no accomplishments of note, and you can call me Steven. So, and this is very dangerous, I should warn you. One of my goals in life is to just at some point in life filibuster. And this is, looks like the best setting I have to pull that off, so, you know, if I start just reciting movie quotes or reading a phone book, you'll know why. Now, so as Angela pointed out, I am a survey research methodologist. And so my job in a project like this is to help design the survey, give my advice as best I can on administering it, and then analyze the results when they come in. Now, my understanding is that you've all received this report, and we can talk about, yeah, we can talk about specific data points and numbers if you'd like, but what I'd like to do for the moment is just kind of contextualize what you have by, A, talking about it kind of in relation to the sample, in relation to what we tend to see in similar surveys, and then some of the big, kind of big-picture takeaways. And then any specific questions you have about numbers, we can do. So in terms of interpreting this, so we have three hundred and sixteen responses. That gives us a margin of error for your community of about five-point-five. I wanna put that in quotes because this is not necessarily a representative sample, and a margin of error is not a useful statistic if you don't have a representative sample. In our case, the sample is a little bit heavily skewed toward homeowners and a little higher income than the population as a whole. So those are important things to keep in mind when you're interpreting the results. You're not necessarily reaching, it's not that we're not reaching, but we're not reaching a proportional number of maybe our younger, earlier-life-career-stage residents, and some of those in lower-income categories. And so those are important to keep in mind. In terms of what we're seeing compared, relative to other communities, my big-picture takeaway is that residents of Tarpon Springs love it here. There's a lot of things they love about this community. They're very happy with this community, and a lot of the concerns they have are concerns that are very consistent with what we see in other communities, in Pinellas County and on the Gulf Coast in general. So you have very positive citizen satisfaction ratings, ninety-three percent consider this a good or excellent place to live. I'm sorry, is that a question?
It is. Did you do anybody, any rentals?
There are some rentals in there. So you're, according to the Census Bureau, you're about a seventy-one percent homeownership rate. The survey's about eighty-one percent.
So if you did the rentals, did you, if you, did you go to the homeowners of the rentals or just the people that live there for now?
So I didn't go to anybody. We distributed this online via a variety of mechanisms, social media, local media, internet webpage, the Connect Tarpon, I believe we used. So there was a variety of mechanisms to push the survey out. So anybody in the community would have been eligible to complete it. We didn't actually partner with homeowners associations or property owners or anything like that. But just to clarify that, we also didn't, we didn't go to anyone. We didn't actually go out and be like, please take this. It was pushed out through those traditional information channels. So I can't really say that we did anything beyond that to target renters.
And was there any financial consideration?
Incentives?
No, not incentives. Was there a income bracket that you were, did they have to put an income bracket down?
Yes, we did ask for income, and it is heavily representative of your higher income-earning brackets. So I believe the mean, what was, what was the mean for the communities around fifty thousand, if I recall? I have it here in front of me, if you give me just one second. Yeah, so the census is showing a median household income of fifty thousand and twelve dollars. We're seeing about fifty percent of respondents in households over a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So does that, does that help?
It does, because it gives me an idea of, with the numbers that you're gonna give us or present to us, who you've actually gotten the information from.
Sure. And that's common with, when you have an opt-in survey, you're commonly going to receive responses from more civically, more engaged citizens, higher-income citizens, higher-educated citizens. It's not uncommon to have results skew in those directions, and that's why I always like to point out that those limitations are there, because sometimes they get glossed over, and we don't realize that this is not necessarily reflective of certain segments of our population.
Is there any way to balance it so that we get a cross-reference to the lesser?
Not necessarily. I think that we strategically opted not to collect certain demographic information for the risk of being identifying or turning people off from completing it. That was something we discussed with the city at the time. And so without some of that information, it would be very difficult to weight the survey the way that they do with like an opinion poll. But we can certainly, if you would like me to break out any cross-tabs that would show you differences in certain responses by those categories, I'd be happy to do so. If someone could just send it to me in an email which ones you'd like, at least give you a kind of a deeper look into that.
Well, the reason I say this, and I'm sure you realize this, the wants and wishes of the wealthy are not the wants and wishes of the not wealthy.
Absolutely.
And, you know, for us to make decisions, we would have to make a decision on a cross-reference of who lives here. And it's not that we wanna do what's just for one group versus another. I know it's harder to get feedback from the lesser, but we still have to have some in those numbers in order to make it a fair-across-the-board-type survey.
Sure. You have about thirteen percent of your responses coming from under fifty-thousand-dollar income earners, and you've got about fifty percent total coming from under a hundred thousand. So there is some representation there in the survey, but it's, as I pointed out, it's not proportional.
Okay.
So that being said, in terms of quality of life, we're seeing about ninety-three percent rate satisfaction, a little higher probably than the average, consistent but a little higher than the average that we would see in similar communities. The only area when we kind of drill down into specifics where the community was not rated very, very positively was as a place to work, as a place to live, visit, retire, great ratings. As a place to work, they're lower. It's not uncommon. It's not necessarily an industrialized community. And so, was I, oh, okay. We gotta come up with a signal so that I can tell, just yell at me or something. So the, that's not, that's not unexpected. That's consistent with what we see among more residential communities on the Gulf Coast. Your two biggest detractors from quality of life in the community, and this speaks, I'm sorry, sir, can your, your name is?
I'm Mike Eisner.
Eisner. This speaks to what Commissioner Eisner is saying as well, is that we have to keep in mind that we're underrepresentative of certain groups here, but the two largest areas of kind of discontent, for lack of a better word, traffic congestion and public transportation. And I can tell you from having done, I don't know how many of these we've done now, those are the two biggest complaints in every community in West Florida. We have, essentially, for all intents and purposes, we have the worst public transit of any major metropolitan area in America. It's just a reality. Our infrastructure was not built for the amount of volume that it's receiving right now. So traffic, couple that with the lack of public transit, everywhere we look, up and down the Gulf Coast, everywhere we survey, same, same two biggest detractors from quality of life, traffic and public transit. So while it is disconcerting, while it's, hopefully, information that's of some value to you, there's nothing surprising in it. And obviously, the resolutions to those problems tend to be whole-of-community solutions and not necessarily limited to one jurisdiction, or not necessarily with any influence of one jurisdiction. Building on that, the, the things that your residents love the most, according to our survey data, are the small-town, community nature of Tarpon Springs and the history and culture of Tarpon Springs. The things they fear the most, from what I'm seeing in the survey results, are overdevelopment and a loss of that, that history and that culture, that a loss of the uniqueness of this community is, are the things that they really tend to fear the most from the responses that we see. We did a SWOT analysis. We looked at the biggest strengths. It's that history. It's that culture. The biggest threats to the community, among them, rapid growth and urbanization of the Tampa Bay region. I'm sure you all have seen the urbanization maps projecting out ten, fifteen, twenty years here. They're insane. And so there's a lot of fear that that, that growth will eventually kind of consume everything that makes this community unique. And so they're really voicing those, those concerns and putting those forward to all of you as their hopes and goals for the strategic planning process.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the traffic, I mean, it's an interesting observation, and I tend to focus on the city and, and we do as well, transportation and getting around within the city limits. And it would have been an interesting follow-up if it would have been a question whether the transportation they were talking about was going elsewhere outside the community, which was a big problem for them, or whether it was something within the community. And the one thing we pride on is that Tarpon is pretty much independent as far as taking, with providing the needs and services of its residents. But I just guess the fact that people are gonna be exposed to this traffic, for example, on U.S. nineteen, that makes that a target for making a comment concerning that. But in reality, I'm just kind of curious of how much that really affects, there's nothing we can do about it.
Sure.
In terms of traffic on U.S. nineteen. But, and we're working very hard to create a walkable community. And I just kind of wonder how much of an effect that would have on, obviously, you can't get much higher on the rating of how they see the community as far as living here. So I don't know that that's a, I mean, it's important, but I don't know that's a large factor when it comes to the city of Tarpon Springs itself within the city limits. But I just, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, or?
Yeah, and that's, that's a great point. That's what I mean when I say a whole-of-community issue, that it extends beyond just the jurisdiction, because that pass-through traffic that's coming on these major thoroughfares, there's not a lot you can do about it. Things happening in other communities can affect the flow of traffic in yours. And so it's really difficult to have kind of localized solutions for some of those major arteries. Let me, let me note a caveat here, that I am by no means even close to a traffic expert. And I hope I won't speak out of turn, but one thing I recommend often is, so we have an institute at the University of South Florida called CUTER, Center for Urban Transportation Research. They have a lot of, you know, Research. They have a lot of, you know, they have a kind of mix of planning and engineering backgrounds. Highly recommend potentially connecting with them, seeing if there are classes where you could get some kind of free student participation, to help with some of the, some of, answering some of the questions that you might have. Or, of course, you know, you can do more complex studies with CUTER, to really measure some specifics.
But you could differentiate in your questioning of whether they're referring to local traffic or commuting traffic?
You certainly, we, we do not ask that in a standard citizen satisfaction survey, but we, there certainly can be follow-up questions that will get at that. And you can have open-ended questions that will help to identify specific problem areas. But that's not standard to a citizen satisfaction survey. Every, every community is so unique that it's difficult to kind of measure those in, in unique questions, without building an actual, an entire survey around traffic and congestion.
See, here's, from what I hear from people, and I'm sure a lot of the people up here hear also, everybody speaks about five o'clock, mirrors and all nineteen, mirrors and all nineteen. And that, that, if you're asking people that utilize that particular area, that's what you're going to get. So that's why I'm trying to find out, in, in order for me to understand what your survey brings to me, the value of it, I need to know in what aspect the people are answering the questions, or what questions you're asking to get those answers.
So this, these questions are coming out of a general battery of questions about quality of life, which is kind of your standard baseline for a citizen satisfaction survey. So that, that question is, is generic. It doesn't address specific areas. You would need a more developed survey to dig into traffic. I mean, you'd essentially need a dedicated traffic survey, to dig into those, some of those kinds of issues, and to identify problem areas, to identify times of travel, to identify some of the differences you're talking about. I completely understand the type of data you're, you're describing. It's just not kind of what the strategic planning surveys generally start with.
I understand. The issue that I have with it is, you could be giving us facts and figures that would not help our particular situation. And, you know, that, I, I needed to be that specific, because we ourselves know where the issues lie. So when I ask a question, I, I want to delve into where it is. That's just me.
Sure, I completely understand. Additional questions on these points? No? Okay. The other piece that I wanted to highlight is the, I've switched surveys, one second, sorry. The other piece that I want to highlight is the city interaction. So we do ask folks about their interactions with city officials. And again, I'm sure you've all seen these numbers. Let me again add a caveat, that we have ninety-five out of three-hundred-and-sixteen who have interacted with a city official in the past six months. So that's only a third of your sample, and ninety-five is getting quite small to start drawing inferences about a broader population. But we will give you the data that we do have on that, which is, which is positive in a lot of areas, and then also highlights some areas for improvement, and I'll, and I'll make a recommendation based on that. So you've got majorities of folks saying that it's easy to contact the city, that, oh, that it's, that it's, the folks they contact are courteous, knowledgeable, you know, all of the things you're looking for in terms of interactions with staff. The kind of sticking point comes with when we ask them if their concern was completely resolved. And only about, a little over, about a third said yes. And so, one of the things that we've seen, and, and interacted with some communities that are doing, is that kind of follow-up protocol. Whether you want it to be a phone call, whether you want it to be a survey, whether you want it to be, you know, just a message that goes out to them, telling them what to do if their concern wasn't resolved. And, and I don't know what is currently in place to do that, but it might be something, it's something we've seen success with in Hillsborough County, among other jurisdictions, that might help to do two things. A, to help to improve those numbers, but B, it also gives you this kind of, I don't, I don't want this to sound, to sound wrong, but it gives you this kind of extra backdoor access to data on a rolling basis, where you can kind of, if, if you're getting folks to respond to you about whether or not their issue is resolved, it gives you that opportunity to keep asking them more questions, to get, to get some data. So you can take that from a, hey, here's where to follow up if your concern wasn't resolved, and by the way, we have these kind of five follow-up questions. And you kind of create this rolling pool of data that becomes a form of performance measurement data, that you can kind of constantly manage based on. So that's just something to think about that stood out to me there. And then the other piece that stood out here is communications overwhelming, an overwhelming number proportionally favor being communicated with via email, also a lot via text message. So again, I don't know the degree to which those mechanisms may be in place, and just not taken advantage of. But they, again, they represent these opportunities, these kind of dual opportunities, where one, you're informing your community, you're keeping them informed in a way that they want, but also, it creates sources of future feedback for you. Because if you're building email and text communication networks with, with residents, it gives you that opportunity to get that feedback, to go back and ask some of those questions, you know, like, hey, we have a pop-up survey, here's ten questions on just traffic. And you say that, and everybody wants to respond, because again, everybody, you know, wants to vent about traffic. And so, and so, that gives you an opportunity to create some of those kind of constant rolling feedback loops with your citizens. It allows them to feel more heard, and it allows you to communicate what you're doing about those challenges. And in closing, that's one thing I would emphasize, that we try to emphasize, and remember, we had this conversation earlier, Renee, we try to emphasize that all, it's, when you do a survey like this, when you do any kind of data collection from your community, it's important to follow up with them and say, at some point, and say, this is what we did, based on what, what we learned from you. Because if they don't see some kind of tangible reminder of what's being done based on the feedback, they're going to become more and more reluctant to give feedback in the future. And you want to know what they're thinking, you want to know what they're experiencing, so that you can better lead, better manage to their needs. And so, those are just ways to potentially kind of build that constant line of communication with your community. As we discussed early on, truly representative samples of a community like this are extremely hard to come by. You can get them, you can get them in a week, they just will cost you a hundred thousand dollars for random digit dialing, and, and targeted marketing, and so forth. So they're very hard to come by, but creating that kind of constant pool of data can allow you to track trends in performance, and help you identify areas that you want to manage to, and so forth. I think that's about the, the scope of what I wanted to really emphasize in review with you. Are there more questions that I can answer on any of this, or any parts, parts that I did not cover? Yes, sir.
The ninety out of three-hundred that have had contact with the city government, is that, from your experience with other municipalities, pretty typical?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's always going to be less than half, I think, in my experience. So about a third is, is pretty consistent. I don't think I've ever seen more than fifty percent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do your surveys always have the similar amounts of people that you respond to?
It's really a mixed, that, that, there's, that's one area where there's not a lot of consistency. I was going to be happy with anything over three-hundred, which is what we got. I certainly would like to see that margin of error come down to four. Again, I'm saying that in quotes, because it's not a representative sample, so the margin of error should be interpreted with, as we discussed, with some caution. But I would certainly love to see that number, at least from a calculation standpoint, come down to four. But overall, the sample, I would call this a good sample. We've certainly had some experiences with bad samples, where communities have just been over-surveyed, or have lost confidence in local government in a way that they're not willing to respond. So I would call this on the good side.
But you know, in, in this study, I know there's data that's available, that you can cross-reference your, your, the, the social demographic that you got, and compare it to other social demographic communities, to see whether their values are going to be any different than that, that you got with a, a higher percentage of households, with the, with their salary or, or income higher. There, I'm sure there's data that you can look at for the households with lesser income, that you can kind of say, well, you know, here's what the values are for these households, here's some studies that were done elsewhere. But can you, is, is there any kind of a, a connection that you can make, that, well, maybe they share the same value in this area, but in this area, they don't? So...
Make sure I understand correctly. Are you talking about comparing your responses against other communities' responses, and how they differ based on...
No, what I'm getting at is, there's generic data available. For example, you've got a population of, let's say, the upper fifty percent of, of social economic level. And then, they've got certain values that they've created, that they've identified. Do those, those values, how do they compare as far as with the lesser socioeconomic community, generically? Would they be, would they share the same values? I mean, I'm talking by academics now, I'm not talking about something that you're going to learn from Tarpon Springs.
So you're essentially saying, does yours, does your community, do the responses we see here align with kind of national norms? Is that a way of just...
Well, for the socioeconomic, that, you could probably see that. But absent any other information, what you see in other communities nationwide, generically, where there is socioeconomic data of a lower income percentage, how do they, do their values, are they significantly different than, than what you're seeing here, is, is what I'm getting? In other words, it's purely an academic research, sort of, something that you might be interested in, but maybe not the commission. But that could shed some light on what we're seeing, what we, in other words, just kind of, not, well, qualify a little more, as far as, if we assume, make an assumption, that the values that we're seeing from the socioeconomic that you, that you sampled here in Tarpon Springs, is it safe to say that the values of the, the lower income, or lower socioeconomic level would be much different? Would be, they, would they be...
Well, you're always going to see disparity in, when you say values, I'm going to say priorities.
Priorities, yes.
Yeah, so you're always going to see disparities in priorities, based on socioeconomic status. That is a political reality. This is socioeconomic reality, is probably a better way of saying that. And that's, you know...
Well, let me just make it easy. Would you, would you say that it's probably not a safe approach to take that, you know, if we look at what we've got right here for the socioeconomic level of the, you know, a hundred thousand plus, that it's not safe to assume that that's going to be the same for your lower economic level community?
Correct. But again, remember that half of your sample here is under a hundred thousand household income.
Well, but I think what, Tarpon Springs is one of the lowest socioeconomic communities in Pinellas County, at least it was. And, but that doesn't mean it's that way elsewhere. Pinellas County is a very wealthy county, and, and Tarpon Springs is changing, and, we've seen a lot of influx of individuals coming from elsewhere within Pinellas County, for a variety of reasons. One being the cost of living being a little less here. But nevertheless, it's driving our socioeconomic community or, or residents higher, in that regard. So, but we still have a, a very large community that we need to be in, in there, and it's like a, you know, we've got a whole lot of wealthy, comfortable people, but then we've got a very large group that is not that way. And I think what Commissioner Eisner was saying is that we want to make sure we bring them along.
Sure.
With what do we do in the future. And we don't want to leave them behind. Now, and I'm hoping that the strategic plan somewhere will be able to address that other aspect in some way or manner, I guess is what I'm getting at. Because I, I don't want this to be, I mean, me personally, a plan for just one segment of our community. That, that's what I'm getting at.
Sure. So what we'll do, if we can, is we will, we will, if you can remind me to, because, we'll pull some cross-tabulations together, that will break some of these priority questions and satisfaction questions out.
Right, yeah.
Based on that. Now, again, your population of lower-income respondents is still going to be lower, but it'll show you the differences by income, whoops, to those responses, side by side.
That would be very helpful.
One thing, and again, it's very difficult in a survey to target low-income respondents. They are, they are the least likely to respond to a survey, just statistically speaking. And targeting based on income requires a lot of marketing information. So you've got to go out, and you've got to hire a firm that has that information, and can target mailers or phone calls, or whatever to it. And it gets prohibitively expensive, in a lot of cases. So that's one of the challenges there. But the cross-tabs will at least allow you that side-by-side comparison, to hopefully shed some light on that. And then, once we send those over, if you have additional questions on them, or if there are other data points you want, and you can communicate through Angela, or just email me, and I can try to pull together any additional data that, out of the survey, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we're relatively new commissioners, we're here just a short time, but we've got some longer-term staff, we've got a, a chief of police down at the end of the dais, that's very much into community policing. He's got a feel for different parts of the community, that we generally don't get involved in. The city manager was that way prior to him becoming city manager. It would be interesting for them to look over that information, and see if something sticks out to them. I mean, we deal with the homeless situation here, manage it. They don't do surveys for us, but we rely on our police department to get out there and talk to them, and get a sense of what would be important to them, and how we do, how do we manage that for them. And it would be the same thing here. We won't have that segment of the community that you're describing, that's going to fail out of survey, but we have our own means of going out there and finding out what's important to them. And maybe, Ms. Chris, we, it would be of some value to, maybe either as a, as a supplement to the strategic plan, or something, add to that, that we did address that other aspect of the community. Not necessarily through surveys, but another means of getting a feel for what was important to them as well. That would be largely, of course, based on what our staff comes back with. But I, whatever it is, it's, it's certainly the Institute of Government's strategic plan, but ultimately, it's our title, you know, the city's title that's on it, not...
Sure.
Yeah. And that's my concern. I think maybe that's what some of the others may be sensing as well.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I think I'm about to get played off here.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
I was just going to make a quick comment, to say, I think one of the, the interesting things that has come out of this, that we heard over and over through all the data collected, is that, can, I will, first, I will preface what I'm about to say, with the fact that Connect Tarpon is the best strategic planning website, honestly, that we, in, in any community we've ever worked with. I can say kudos to your staff, Mark, because it really, it is just open communication. I've never seen one as well-done as that. However, I do think there is a gap, to your point, Commissioner Eisner. And I think when we begin to develop those strategic goals, there is going to be a communication piece. Because we hear a lot, oh, well, that's not what I'm hearing. But yet, when we're asking for respondents, we're not getting it. And so, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this was the first resident survey that you had ever done. More than likely, you're going to have a goal around getting community input and feedback as part of your strategic plan. So I think, if anything, there definitely are some gaps in the data, but that will need to be addressed as we move forward with the goals. So I hope that kind of helps.
Yes.
At least, that's what we're observing. So...
Commissioner Eisner, I think you were starting to...
Yes.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I didn't see your hand.
That's okay. I also wanted to ask, because you have an employee survey here.
Yes.
And in the employee survey, you have very positive perspective, ninety-three percent agree it's a good place to work. Do you have any follow-up of why they would say that?
That's going to be a Dr. Daley question.
Yep, he is on, he is coming up.
So I'm jumping the gun again.
It's okay. You have the employee engagement guru. Unlike me, he actually does have a lot of accomplishments, so it'll be, no, it'll be great.
But he, he did help with it, so he's going to just hang out while he does the survey, but I am going to introduce Dr. Daley.
Let me just ask one more. I'll, I'll go backwards. When you do these surveys, if it's a written survey, how hard is it to put in a, a ballpark figure of income, where it's whatever, twenty-five to fifty thousand, or fifty to seventy-five thousand, or however you have it, so that you have somewhat of a knowledge of who's responding to it? I know people will change numbers, but we get at least an idea.
So we've asked them that, that's in the survey.
Okay.
My, my concern, the caveat I'm offering... My, my concern, the caveat I'm offering when I describe that is that when we look at the respondents, they're higher income than the community as a whole. And so we asked them their income. We have all those categories in there. It's just that the number of responses in the lower income categories are small. And so that's what I'm saying to the mayor is that we'll give you that cross tab that compares responses based on those categories. We just didn't get as many under 35,000s as we wish we would have gotten to represent the community.
Okay.
But you can still draw inferences from the responses they did give you. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yep.
So I'm going to introduce Dr. Daley. So one of the things about our model of strategic planning is that we really try to look at it holistically. And we feel that it's critically important that the employees have an opportunity to be surveyed as well as conduct a focus groups, focus group, excuse me, with them. So Dr. Daley, he is our HR guru, although he has a lot more mini accomplishments than that. But he is an associate professor within the School of Public Affairs at USF. So I will let him come up and talk to you about the survey and the focus group.
Thank you, Angela. Good evenings.
Good evening.
I am John Daley, yes. And I have been with University of South Florida 36 years, and that's an accomplishment in itself, I think.
How many years?
36 years with USF.
So you do Dr. Lieberman.
Please?
Dr. Lieberman.
Oh, yeah. Yep. I, I remember him well, I think. Yeah. It's been, been a while. Okay. My, my particular part of this venture is to analyze the data that was collected by Dr. Neely from the employee survey. And I want to tell you, just to begin with, success in strategic planning, really, in my mind, takes three things. It takes strong organizational leadership from, from the top. You know, you have to, have to believe in your plan, and you have to demonstrate that through, to your, to your employees. Good organizational communication is number two. And the area that is often missed, especially, I think, in the private sector, although don't let me, don't let me go into the private sector, is employee commitment. Employee commitment is, is often undervalued in terms of success, of completion, of successful strategic plans. And unfortunately, about two thirds of strategic plans are developed and sit collecting dust in, in a bookcase. And you don't want that. And so it's important to, to have a sense of what your citizens want and also what your employees want. And in terms of the survey that was done, there are some limitations to it. And I just want to talk briefly about the limitations. One is, we did a survey of all employees on an aggregate basis. We didn't take it down to a departmental level. So I can't, I can't tell you in terms of a departmental level where the variances might exist. But I can tell you that this particular, the feedback that we received from the employees, to me, was astonishingly high and positive. You don't normally expect to see the kinds of positive responses that came back through this survey. And I think one of the reasons why they, it might be so positive is because you have, I think had, had, have had fairly good stability and consistency in terms of long-term, long-term employees. And, and I'm getting off topic, and I'll try to get back on topic. But in, just taking a quick look at the demographics, and I just tried to pencil some of that, some of that in, 44% of your, of the respondents have been with the city for four, five years or less. 56% have been six years or more. So you've got stability there in terms of your workforce. In current composition, 64% of your, of the respondents have been with the city for six years or more. So you've got, you've got really good stability in terms of your workforce. Gender is a little bit difficult for me to understand because I, I don't know what the gender breakdown is in your workforce. But of the respondent pool, 60, 56% were male, 30% roughly were female, and 12% preferred not to say. I, I'm not sure. That may well be because of concerns for being able to be identified. But it's one of the reasons why we didn't go to the, to the department level, I believe. And finally, in terms of education, the public sector had, typically has a better educated workforce in the aggregate than they do in the private sector. And in the case of your city, 33% of your employees have college degrees or better. 57% are high, some college or less. So you've got a pretty, you've got a pretty stable workforce, and you've got a pretty well-educated workforce. And you are to be commended for that. Because it's, not only is the issue of something being necessary and sufficient, but you, you want to make sure that you have, something may be necessary, but it may not be sufficient. And in, in terms of, you may have, the necessary part is you may have a workforce that has the ability to successfully work with you on a strategic plan and implementing a strategic plan. That's necessary, but it may not be sufficient. The sufficient part of it is, do you have a committed workforce? And from what the survey results we have received, and you've seen, you've probably reviewed them, they are exceptionally high in terms of employee commitment and in terms of job satisfaction in the 90, in the 90% range. It's going to be, you know, we could break down the data further, I suppose, in terms of age or in terms of gender, but it's not going to much matter when you've got numbers that high. I mean, you're not going to have much variability there. 84% view this city as a positive place to work. And would, and 89% would encourage others to, to join the workforce. I've done studies with larger, not studies, I've done training sessions in the past with larger cities where, and counties, Hillsborough County is an example. And I don't mean to be, to be demeaning Hillsborough County. But when I'd ask the employees to introduce themselves, they would say, I'm Joe Smith. I've been here 27 years, five months and six days. And that means I have two years, so, so and so days. You know, they, they're counting the days until they reach retirement, which apparently at that point in time is 30. I don't think you're going to have that in, in the city. I think, I think your employees are very much committed to, to their, to their jobs. And they're very proud of, of the work that they do. The areas, the areas that, that we look at in terms of the survey, employee commitment, employee job satisfaction, we've already talked about that, very high. The areas of organizational communication, I think if you take a look at organizational communication, and that's the, the next page, what you will find is that intra-departmental communication is the highest. Inter-departmental communication across departments is, is less than that. And then communication up to the change through the executive level is the lowest of the three. But it's still very strong. You know, we still see high levels of agreement or satisfaction with effective employee communication with one another, with their, across their departments, with their supervisors, and the like. In terms of the employee survey, I thought the results were amazingly high. And I thought that you have alignment with your workforce eager to work with you on the development of new opportunities, because they have a strong sense of pride in the organization that, that they work within. Admittedly, I'm only seeing the responses of 40%, 60% of your employees. But I, but I dare say, I doubt that there would be, the other 40% have just decided to check out of the game. I think that your system is, your, the city manager and department head supervisors should be commended for the fact that there is that high of a level of support from the citizens or from the employees. They seem to be very proud of the work that they do. And they also are very proud of their connection with the community or, community and the residents within the community. I, I think they feel as though they're really involved in, in what they do. So in terms of the areas of Achilles' heels, in terms of the survey, the weakest areas, the weakest area that we always see, and that is in the area of organizational communication. But again, as I've said, your organizational communication is pretty respectable, higher than we often see in other similar types of surveys that we do in, in other systems. Questions? Okay. I must be putting you all to sleep. I'm sorry. All right. We also, we also did a employee focus group with 22 of your employees. And I will, I have to, I have to place a caveat on this. And I don't know, I don't know the justification for it. There may well have been. When I looked at the list of people, and if you look at the, if you look at the, the employee focus group on December 3rd, the study here on December 3rd, I did not see police or fire representation, maybe other than a dispatcher? Would a dispatcher be within the police department?
Yes.
Okay. Then, then there was...
I think there was officers there too.
Were there? Okay. I didn't, didn't see them listed here. My apologies. Then, then that was one of the concerns that I had. But I, poof, it's gone. I no longer have a concern about it. The, what you see up here is the list of the, from the 22 people that I identified in terms of the, the study here is, is having been there. This, these are the highest ranked priorities among the group in total. And I, I think if you take a look, what you, what you see there is the kind of pride and commitment that, that I'm talking, that we're talking about within the employee survey also shows up in terms of the strengths of this, of the city and what the city does. The employees are proud of their work performed in terms of the quality of work performed. They're proud of the fact that they are working with the citizens. And they seem to be proud of working with one another, which is, which is a great thing. I think that one of the benefits you also have here is strength is viewed in being in a smaller organization. And by that I mean an organization where you can get to know your fellow employee. The, the optimal number, you're above the optimal number. But the optimal number is about 200 employees at one organization. Because that way, the, a plant manager or city, city manager can get to know each and every employee by first name. You're at, I think you're at 348 in terms of your, your workforce, something in that 350 employees and change. If you, if you do any kind of management by wandering around, Mark, hopefully you've gotten to know most of your employees' names. It's difficult to do, I know, with that many employees. But, but I think there is a value on the part of the employee, knowing that they're working for an organization where they can see the good that they're doing. And so the, the size of your organization is a plus in terms of services to the customer. I, I tell my students at, at USF that if I was reincarnated, I'd probably be reincarnated as a city manager. I would not, you know, we have many students that come in that want to go to work for the federal government, or they want to be this, or they want to be that. I think the real joy in life is being in local government, seeing the absolute good that you do from the people you serve, directly from the people you serve. So I, I commend your, your employees for what they do. They also saw the strength in the identity of the city. And I was thinking about that as I came in. When you go to a city, what do you see? You see a brand new, high-priced city hall, a state-of-the-art city hall. And what do you pride yourself on here? One of the big things you pride yourself on is heritage. And, you know, when I came in here, I'm from Indiana. And Indiana, you know, basketball nuts. And one of my favorite movies is something called Hoosiers, you know? And I felt like I was walking in to, in to watch the, the basketball game, you know, in this building. This is heritage. This is, this is an example of a symbol of the culture of your city. And it's an important one. And so they, your employees see the city as having, having an identity that is very important. In terms of the weaknesses that, that they identified, you see them here. I think they were concerned about competitive pay and the cost of living. Who wouldn't be at this particular point in time? We're seeing highest inflation rates since the late 1980s. I remember my brother, my brother bought a house in Temple, in Tarpon Springs in 1979, not Tarpon Springs, at Northern Clearwater, just south of Dunedin. What, what is that? Palm Harbor in that area? 19% interest rate back then. And, you know, there's, there's, I, I think that's in the minds of, of employees. They'd also like to see increases in budgets, in allocation of dollars for resources, and not just for their own pocketbook, but also to be able to have the equipment that they need in order to, to get the job done, to do the job better. Smaller numbers saw infrastructure aging problems. And I'm not talking about this building. I'm talking about maybe water, water pipes and the infrastructure being in terms of water and sewage and, and the like. There was some mention of lengthy process for development. Honestly, I can't recall what that, what that is related to. But there, but I'm sure that you probably have come across it possibly in, from the citizenry. A desire for new hiring, speed in terms of new hiring. And they mentioned a lack of forward thinking. And the lack of forward thinking is basically, this is the way we've always done it. And so let's continue to do it this way. I think some of the employees would like to see greater entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial, out of the box thinking. So those are the, the strengths and weaknesses. Now typically, strengths and weaknesses deal with inside the organization. Your opportunities and threats deal with factors outside of the organization. But I can tell you that, to me, it seems as though the, the focus groups, really, some of these are, I would have probably placed them as weaknesses rather than opportunities. The opportunity of reevaluating the pay scale in light of the current economy, to me, would probably be internal rather than external. Ability for managers to offer competitive pay in order to, to fend off poaching from other organizations. And a reduced compression of wages to promote employee satisfaction. You know, I don't necessarily would agree that, that one's pay necessarily relates to employee satisfaction. What I would encourage you to, to take a look at is take a look at the other factors that maybe were less influential in this. The opportunities, for example, one of the members indicating a desire to have a grant rider in order to acquire greater opportunities, federal grants, might be an example of one that I would think of. In terms of the threats, a loss of employees was a main concern, a loss, basically loss of experience in order to, to keep the engine running. Misinformation about social media. I'm not exactly sure. Do you, do you have any recollection of that in terms of what they might have, might, might have talked about there?
Yeah, I think there were just some concerns that residents were getting information from social media, and then they would contact employees. And it was, took a lot of time for the employees to kind of explain and go through the process. And it was really a threat to, to, to them being able to provide that high level of service while responding to some of the inquiries from the community.
You didn't explain to them that everything that's on social media is true?
Yes. And the final area, and I think it is an area of true concern, to me at least, is the cyber issue. Making sure that your systems are protected against employee, against outside intervention and outside threat. intervention and outside threats. Overall, my assessments would be that there's a high level of pride among the employees, there's good relationships between the employees within and across departments and with their supervisors, and I think above. I think there is a strong indication of public service commitment and motivation on the part of your workforce, and that is a necessary condition for success, I think, for an effectively implemented strategic city plan and achieving the goals that you wish to achieve. So that's all I have.
Questions for Dr. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes, I'll go back to the question I asked earlier. Why?
Why what?
Why would, why are we getting a 90% fair, equitable workplace? Is there a reason that they're giving? Because, I'm going to play the devil's advocate on this, we could pay top dollar, have people not work, and they would give us the greatest of responses, just, I'm being a little facetious in my statement, so you can get a whole 95%, you can get 100% feedback. So my question is, how did we get such good numbers? You seem to be very enthused about saying that we have a great workforce and that they're very motivated, so I want to know why.
Well, I would have to say, it probably relates to effective relationships, employee relationships, because I don't think it relates to, you're right, you could, I would disagree with you on the pay. You could pay...
That was not meant to be serious.
Okay, I mean, because I think probably, and I don't know for a fact, I've used Temple Terrace as a comparator, not Temple Terrace, Tarpon Springs as a comparator in other pay studies, but I haven't looked at where you are relative to other cities, I've just used comparative data from your city. But I would say probably the likelihood is that your employees may feel somewhat undercompensated in the system, having said that, to then still be as positive as they were. I was surprised, I mean, I tell you, admittedly, I was exceptionally surprised. I thought maybe Stephen might be being paid by the city, by the city to doctor the data, because it was very positive. And, you know, so I was surprised. I don't know that I can answer it, but I would have expected greater variability in response than I received. And the only thing I can say is, you've got a lot of people that are very dedicated, probably a lot of people who grew up in this community, and because of that, they love the city and they love being a part of the public service for the community in the area. And that's the only explanation I can give you, because, pardon my way of saying it, if everyone was a transplant in from Indiana or New York and were your employees here, I don't think you'd have the same high level of job satisfaction and pride.
And if I could comment, I think, following along with that, I think the one thing that we saw in the data was that the values of the employees matched with the values of the city. So I think that's another reason you're seeing 90%, because when asked the question about their job and their job duties and their position, I think it was like 89% said that their values matched with the mission and vision of the city. And so I think that also contributes to that 90% satisfaction.
I have no issue with the 90%, that's not my question. My question is, I need to, I'd like to know what it is, is it the job they're doing, is it the leadership that's providing? Are they having tough days, are they having easy days? Did they just buy a new, get a new truck, you know, for their, I don't know what the detail that goes into the 90%. I'm just getting a umbrella view, and what I'm trying to know is, what actually are we doing right to get that high result?
Well, I think, here's one way in which I'll answer that, and then my colleagues can answer it also. If an employee is unhappy with, has lowered job satisfaction and is unhappy, it is, in my opinion, not something that you point at your city manager and say, your city manager is the one, your leadership is the one that's causing this. What causes that is poor supervisor-employee relationships. You look at one person above you, the person that you report to, you have a strong relationship with that person, then you're going to have higher job satisfaction. And, you know, I can tell you, the quickest way to lose employees is to have a high contention between your supervisors and your employees. And I didn't see it in the results of the survey, and that's, that would be the one factor that I would say. There clearly are other factors, working in a smaller, in a smaller community, working in a community that has character and pride, working with the citizens is important, yeah, you're going to have bad days, but you let those roll off, and so...
Yeah, I was just going to make one other comment. So Dr. Neely and I were also just talking, so I think, again, going back to what I said about the resident survey and there being a gap, I'm not sure that you have always surveyed your employees as well, and so again, this would be a goal. One of the things that Dr. Neely does is, we do employee engagement surveys, right? And that goes into what you're talking about, it really dives into some of those questions that you're asking. I just don't know that you've ever done those, and this survey was specific to really looking at strategic planning. So again, I think one of the goals that will come out of your strategic plan will be to survey your employees, probably, do you usually do it annually? Every two years? Every two years, so.
So if I can maybe just add to that, to maybe...
You've got to go up there, because it's...
Oh, okay. Maybe, I'm very loud normally, so, yeah. So, just to contextualize that a little bit, when you do a survey of a citizen population, you've got about 15 minutes of their attention. Employees, you generally want to keep those to about 10, 15 at a max. So you can only do so much in a survey. So a survey needs to have specific targeted goals. The goals of a survey in a strategic planning process is to find problems. It's like, a strategic planning process, the data collection around it is kind of like your checkup, right? You're looking for, you're poking places and seeing if you find anyone that hurts. And so we're looking for areas that would be a problem of concern that you would want to dig down to in deeper. But the net cast by a strategic planning survey is very broad, and so it doesn't necessarily do a lot of that digging, it's looking for the areas where we need to dig. And so hopefully that will help to clarify some of that. An employee engagement survey is much more targeted. Employee engagement survey, we recommend doing, oh, hello.
Go ahead.
Every two years, this is getting weird up here. They keep turning around and seeing someone.
And that also relates to, and I don't know that it would make a difference here, that also relates to the fact that we did it on an aggregate basis, we didn't do it on a departmental basis. And in past stuff that I'm sure Stephen has done and I have done, what you find is, if you have a problem supervisor in an area, you're going to find it more difficult, and people leave, you're going to find it more difficult for people internally to move within that position from other departments, because they know what they don't want to, they know who and who they don't want to work with. And you'll be able to identify specific problem points within an organization on the basis of going down into a departmental level or going down to a supervisory level. The challenge you have is maintaining anonymity of the respondent, and so you have to craft it in such a way to be able to do that.
Okay, yeah, sorry. No, I mean, that's pretty much the main point there, but the employee engagement surveys are a more detailed survey that we do recommend every two years, but as I said with the citizen survey, I'd say even more so with an employee engagement survey. Don't do an employee engagement survey if you're not going to act on the results, if you're not going to follow up on the results, because you'll actually breed more discontent among employees, and you don't have a lot of discontent from what we're seeing here, but believe me, we've done communities that do, we've done organizations that do, and the worst thing you could do is collect all of that feedback and then just do nothing with it. And they said, and two years later, they're saying, well, we told you, we told you what was wrong and you still haven't fixed it. So it makes it even worse. So hopefully that helps to clarify some of that.
Thank you. One last...
I have a question, not on the surveys, but from the employee focus group, and I think probably the most important point that was made in all of this is, this is a strategic planning process, don't read more into what you're seeing...
Correct.
...other than it's the strategic planning process. We're not going to learn other things that may be of interest, some of these commissioners as part of that, which it would be a targeted survey later, an engagement survey, but for the purpose of strategic planning, we're not going to do that.
Correct.
The question that I have is, how does the employee information fit in to the strategic plan? How is that important to a strategic plan? I know the residents, I mean, they'll identify what's important to us, and that's what we work to, and, but where do the employees fit in?
Well, in terms of the survey, more so probably than the SWOT analysis, but the SWOT analysis basically identifies, again, alignment of employees, whether the employees have the kinds of attitudinal base necessary for a successful strategic plan. And so, you know, the internal identifying strengths and weaknesses is probably more important than is the opportunities and threats, as we saw here, because the opportunities and threats are outside of the organization that can be utilized to make the organization better.
I think you answered that question. For me, I think what's important is, as you said, if we've got certain priorities that are coming out of the residents and our employees don't have that type of attitude to address those priorities of the residents, then we're in trouble.
Yeah, and I...
And what you're saying is, it's a good match between the two.
Right.
Yeah, and what the SWOT analysis, the employee focus group on a smaller basis basically confirmed what we were seeing in the employee survey, and that is, that you've got dedicated, you've got a dedicated workforce here. You know, and so I think you're in pretty good shape for strategic planning.
And I think the other thing to remember, and we'll talk about this a little bit on the 21st, when you look at strategic planning, everyone always, sometimes will confuse it with action planning. And so the importance of having employee buy-in, right, what we're talking about, and having the skill set to be able to implement the strategy, right, that's really important. So you as elected officials really should be over here when you look at a chart for strategic planning. You should be the ones focused on visioning and setting the goals and the policies and holding it accountable. But it's the employees who are really doing the action steps to make all of those things happen. So if you're not gathering the data and you're not making sure that you have the right people in the right places with the right resources and the right budget, they're never going to be able to accomplish the strategic plan over here. And that's why we feel it's so important to make sure that we gather data from the employees and include them in the process.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to run briefly through, so let me tell you what we did. We ended up holding an additional two community focus groups. So we got what data we've gone through tonight, we tried to come up with, again, these are drafts, this was just a starting point with the community. So you can see here, there's kind of six key areas that began emerging, and we'll dive into these more when we meet on May 21st. But I just wanted to show with you a couple, just highlight a couple really quickly. So as you can see, when we looked at this specific one, we heard a lot about the preservation, climate issues, ecotourism opportunities, protecting the local cultural traditions, obviously sea level rise. We heard some really interesting things around historic walking tours of downtown, really people trying, I think citizens very interested in being a little bit out of the box and entrepreneurial. You'll see in the matrix on the right, we asked them their perception of if they thought it was difficult or easy to do, if they thought it would have a low or high impact. And so you can see here kind of where all of these things fell. Again, this information is also located on Connect Tarpon in the final report, but I just kind of, we just want, I just want to briefly share with you kind of where the community was around these issues and what they thought were some priorities. When you look at growth and development, there was a lot of conversation around smart development. The other thing that came up over and over was around revitalization, not necessarily new development, we heard that. And then again, I know that you guys are working on a comprehensive plan, however, we did hear, did hear that as well, so right in line with where you are. In terms of visionary leadership, again, this goes back to that communication piece, we heard a lot about communications, making sure to, your comment Commissioner Eisner, making sure that all citizens and underrepresented groups that were able to get that information, we heard that over and over. Looking at improving, obviously, providing and ensuring the resources and tools needed to be able to do that, whatever that may look like. And then making sure that there is integration of community member voices in this plan. In terms of infrastructure, obviously, we heard a lot about reclaimed water and sewage, talking about a dredging of the waterways and canals, looking at sidewalks, better signage, crosswalks, obviously, traffic, and then really looking at modernization. And again, this goes back to what we said from the beginning, so the citizens were really interested in preserving the historical characteristics of the city, but at the same time, they recognize the need to improve and modernize utilities, water, sewer, et cetera. So community engagement and involvement, there was a very, very lofty discussion around this. And so when you look at this matrix, you know, usually what's in the top right-hand corner is, you know, what you, should be easy to do, should have a great impact and should be easy to do. But interestingly enough, the citizens felt almost that all of these were interest, that were easy to do and would have a great impact, which isn't necessarily the case, but you can see that they're very passionate about this. So again, this was all about communications, looking at maybe expanding some of the community coalitions, talking about social media and the city website, looking at ways, maybe there's town halls or other ideas for public discourse. Quality of life, we heard a lot here about, obviously, transportation, you heard that in the survey. We also heard housing, housing was a big issue, I heard someone mention homelessness tonight, we heard that as well. Heard a lot here around being able to connect downtown to the sponge docks, that were just not one or the other, but really kind of having this connection. And then looking at the natural resources, there was a lot of discussion with community members around either protecting them or using them, but being able to really take advantage and protect them. Okay, so what does this mean? So that's a lot of data and a lot of information, and so, so what? So we need you to come prepared on May 21st, we start at 9:00 a.m. Please make sure that you have gone to Connect Tarpon and that you have reviewed, there are very lengthy reports, this lovely lady right here, Karen from SPC, you've seen her at almost everything, she takes very, very, very detailed notes, and they're all in Connect Tarpon. So I please ask you to make sure that you have reviewed everything before you come on May 21st, that you come prepared to think about the mission, the vision, core values, right, those kind of guiding principles and core values, and then some goals and objectives. The reason I put this matrix up here is because this is a little bit opposite of the matrix I just showed you. I want you to be in the top-left quadrant. As an elected official, we want you to have high influence and have high interest in what you're doing. So in order for you to do that, throughout this next phase of this process, you have to engage and empower yourself. What does that mean? Review all the documents I just talked about, come prepared on May 21st. The more you know, the more you can share. Collaborate and support. If you have additional information that we did not gather, if you, especially for you newly elected, if you were in the community quite a bit and you heard things that weren't mentioned, you need to bring that to us, to our attention on May 21st. Involve in change management, change is hard for everybody, but this is a culture shift, you have not done a strategic plan for this... You have not done a strategic plan for this city in over twenty years. You have newly elected officials. We have to embrace it. Again, we don't want it to be what Dr. Bailey said, we don't want it to sit on a shelf. The way we do it, it should be fluid, it should be flexible, but it should be impactful. And then lastly, manage it closely, not just monitor it, but this is an accountability tool. It's an accountability tool for, for the city manager and his team, it's accountability tool for you as elected officials, it's an accountability tool for the employees, and most importantly, it's an accountability tool for the citizens to hold you accountable. And so I think it's really important that we recognize that as we go into the next phase of this process. So, mark your calendars, come prepared, do your homework. Nine AM, May twenty-first, St. Pete College, Tarpon, Community Room. Business casual, you're gonna work, it's gonna be hard, we're not always gonna agree, but at the end of the day, we're gonna have, we're gonna have some good, good things come out of it, okay? Questions, concerns? Are you ready to work?
May twenty-first.
May twenty, not tonight, May twenty-first.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you so much, and if any of the new commissioners have questions, Renee has my information. If you have any follow-up with Dr. Neely or Dr. Bailey, we'll be happy to get you in contact with them, all right? Have a great evening, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chris. Ms. Vincent, do you have anything to offer?
I will, just if you do have problems with, you know, finding anything on Connect Tarpon, or if you want something, just let us know, let me know, and I'll try to help everybody navigate and get there. I think that's just, that's, it's all there, so, thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank the Institute of Government and the collaborative laboratories for being here this evening, and we very much appreciate this process, and I, I mean, to be honest, we are excited about it. I was here as city manager when we had a strategic plan way back, and Dr. Lieberman, Joe Lieberman, helped develop that, and he also helped us do the Union Academy redevelopment plan, which was shortly after that. So it'll be nice to have that back on our shelves, working to those objectives, so. I'd like to go to staff comments, any staff comments?
No comments, sir.
Ms. Jacobs?
I have no comments, thank you.
Any of the commissioners?
No comments.
Well, you can't speak anyway, so.
Quit picking on him.
Well, I do have one announcement. This Friday, we have a, what's called the, an Ava Block Party Automated Vehicle Advantage PSTA Autonomous Vehicle that's going to be launched in Dunedin, and we've been talking to the Director of PSTA, Brad Miller, about bringing it to Tarpon Springs, and I think the game plan was, it's gonna be coming here after Dunedin, I believe, is that, do you recall that?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah, and I think it might be nice if you go down there, we're gonna try and get him to bring one of those vehicles up here for at least a display so everybody can see it. It's kind of a Disney-like vehicle that is very easy to get around Tarpon Springs.
Where in Dunedin?
It says Dunedin, and there's an email, I think, that you got from Trish Hickey advising you of that, and I'll ask her to send it out again tomorrow, but it's at, from noon till two o'clock. I would suspect it's gonna be down by, by the City Hall, but I'd have to double-check on that. Nothing else, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-eight. Thank you.